Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for Wednesday, December 4th, to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence to think about what you need to think about. Thank you. If you'd all be kind enough to stand and please join Alderwoman Newton in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll. Ardone?
Here.
Kelly? McGinnis?
Here.
Reinert?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Lynch? T. Dunn?
Here.
Jobshin?
Here.
And Burkholder?
Here.
A. President, Your Honor. Thank you, sir. So again, good evening and welcome. To begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody that's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're sharing your thoughts with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire I know we all share to make Davenport a better place. For the folks in here, if you'd just be kind enough to put your cellphone on silent or turn it off simply, it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council on an agenda item or at the end, please wait to be recognized and then come to the podium. The microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, order, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address the council as one body and not to any individual. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. Mr. Maxheimer, is there any city administrator update tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item. Today, the police department issued a press release and they had got some media coverage on some recent crime reduction efforts. I just wanted to point those out for everybody. Shots fired incidents decreased by 66.7% from the five-year average compared to last year, down 26.6%. Stolen vehicles, down 36.4%. So I just wanted to acknowledge Chief Playdell and his leadership team, really gratitude and acknowledge them for what they're doing and the efforts that they've come up with. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. We have two public hearings this evening, one under community development and one under public works. The first will be under community development and Alderwoman McGinnis will lead tonight. Alderwoman McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing on the proposed amendment to Chapter 3.34 entitled Village of East Davenport Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, to extend the term for 20 additional years pursuant to Iowa Code, Chapter 386. Is there anyone in the public with comment? Please come forward and name an order or address, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Paul Schnell, and I'm here to voice my support for the Village of East Davenport Schmid. I have a business down in the Village of East Davenport, the Edward Jones Business. I've been down there for 30 years. And I'm the vice president of the Schmid and have been for a number of years. We'd just like to thank you all for your partnership with the city and everything you've done with the village. We're very proud of our area and what we're accomplishing. Some things that the Schmid has done is we've done decorative sidewalks and we've partnered with the city on those kind of things. Kiosks, planters and flowers, benches, bike racks. And our latest project, we're really proud of, is the lighting of the rooftops in the village. And we have an ability right now, they're green and red for Christmas, and they can go different colors throughout the year. So that's a partnership with some fundraising, some private fundraising, and the Schmid contributed to that. We're very proud of the village. We want to continue that partnership with the city in the future. And I think a lot of our board is here. If you want to raise your hands for our board, and we're all very, very supportive of the Schmid. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one else, I would make a move to close the public hearing. All in favor? Opposed? Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Next public hearing is under Public Works. Alderman Rick Dunn will discuss. Alderman Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated costs for the compost facility floor modification project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Rick Dunn. Next is petition communications. I, too, want to second one our city administrator just talked about. Chief, outstanding job in your department, given the briefing today and the crime reduction strategies. 66% reduction shots fired is significant, 26% just over the last year. But I love what you said. It's a significant collaboration and partnership between many folks. Very appreciative of your staff, your officers, your department, doing the work that you do. But as you said in the briefing, it takes a lot of folks. And in the briefing, if you get it and it's posted now, the amount of folks, organizations, individuals, community members, et cetera, that have helped contribute to the reduction, and we've got a long way to go yet, but significant improvements over the last few years, I just want to emphasize again to you, to your department, to the respective entities, and whether it's staff or community organizations that you mentioned today, great job. Thank you very much. Anyone else? I see Alderman Jobshin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I apologize to the community. I'll be canceling next week's ward meeting that was scheduled for Tuesday, December 10th. We'll look to pick things back up in 2025. If anyone has questions for me or comments, as always, they can be reached email, phone, all those things that are listed on city's webpage. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobshin. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move to the four areas of discussion. The first is community development. Alderwoman McGinnis will discuss. Alderwoman McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first item on the community development tonight is the third consideration of an ordinance for Case ORD 24-04, being the request of the City of Davenport to amend various sections of Title 17 entitled zoning of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa regarding residential building design standards. Is there anyone from the public with comment? Anyone on council? That item will move on. The second item is a first consideration. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 3.34 entitled Village of East Davenport Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, to extend the term for 20 additional years pursuant to Iowa Code, Chapter 386. Anyone for the public with comment? Anyone from council? This item also moves on. And item number three is a resolution approving a revised development agreement with 227 Leclerc LLC for the Riverwatch Place project and authorizing the city administrator or designate to execute necessary documents. Now, before I ask for public with comment, I would ask our city administrator, this is a revised development agreement, would you go over the revisions that are, just briefly, that are in this plan? Thank you.
I will. Thank you. When I reference paragraph number, it is the actual numbered paragraph in the agreement, not necessarily separate paragraphs within those subsections. So Paragraph 1 just adds federal codes in addition to state and local. If you go to Paragraph 2, that adds a requirement to complete a sidewalk installation on Third and Leclerc Streets within 12 months of issuance of a notice to proceed from the city. It also adds a failure to comply with sidewalk installation in a timely fashion may result in forfeiture of the hotel motel rebate incentives. There is also a clawback provision in that paragraph that talks about any rebates that have already been provided to the developer of hotel motel may be recouped by the city for nonperformance of the sidewalk requirements. And it is clarification on the city's sole discretion on when to issue the notice to proceed on the sidewalks. So moving to Paragraph 3, that includes a requirement that the developer enrolls in and satisfactorily completes the IDNR land recycling program, and failure to comply with that provision may result in developer becoming ineligible for hotel motel tax rebate. So Paragraph 4 talks about material breach of the agreement, and that may result in the city terminating tax exemptions or rebates provided in the agreement. That was new language on the most recent draft. Paragraph 5, as a requirement that the project is to commence by 12:30, 1:25, or the agreement may be terminated by the city. And then finally, Paragraph 6 talks about an indemnification defended, hold harmless, the developer provides that to the city. That's included in this agreement as for claims, damages, or liabilities arising over related to the project. So that is kind of a summary of the changes on the new proposed development agreement.
Thank you, Administrator Maxheimer. Now, anyone for the public with comment, please? Come forward, name, order, or address.
Sheryl Shagnon, third ward. I had some issues with the verbiage in the agreement regarding the additional building, the entertainment event space, and it said it would be completed in the general time. And that word is very subjective, objective, certainly not very concrete. And so I think it would be very hard for the city to hold the developer to any kind of breach of contract when the word is used as a general time period. Additionally, I want to clarify where I believe there is some confusion about city money. It's taxpayer money. That the city has a fiduciary responsibility to use appropriately. 50% to 75% of that income is significant income when you figure out, and just rounding of the numbers, that the return on the investment should be approximately five to six years before they get their money back. Additionally, they're going to make quite a bit of money if you figure it out, $100 a night per room, make it easy numbers, take it down to 80 rooms versus 82 rooms, figure it out at 50 weeks versus 52 weeks, just to keep the numbers easy, and they're going to make quite a bit of money. 75% of that back is quite a bit of money. If you go up to $150 a night, the numbers obviously go up incrementally. The difference between $300,000 of taxpayer money versus $200,000 of taxpayer money was 75% going back and/or 50% going back over 10 to 15 years. That money's supposed to go into general fund. It's supposed to be used to make life better for the residents of the city. So when people talk about you giving things away, that's what they're referring to. The developer bought the land knowing there was problems. So giving him the rebates, I think you guys need to be more Shark Tank versus Baby Shark.
Thank you.
Judith Lee, second ward. First of all, I went back and listened to the promises that were made about providing the public with information about this project. Promises that were made by a director and said that this information, all the information that has been provided to council would also be provided to the public. As I was surprised to see this come back on the agenda and a little bit stunned, I thought, well, I'll go find out all this information. And I went to the background information, none of it's there. They had weeks to get this up on the agenda for background information. The public is still being left in the dark, and yet we're supposed to be commenting. It's our duty to provide you with information. Even the DNR information, and I looked at the DNR website, as you all know, and there has been nothing put up there for 20 years, yet there have been communications between the city and DNR. So it's not provided to us by the city, it's also not provided to us by the state. So there's no way to get this information at this point. So with that, I think there's also a problem with this project. And if you look at it, the agreement refers to a plat and renderings. There's no attachment even in the background for that information. And if we're looking at one of the two sites for this agreement, there's no way to know how that fits into the site without the attachment. So the agreement is not complete. That was provided to you and to the public, as far as I know, per the agenda. And my question also is, if we're only looking at one part of this very difficult, small, and odd-shaped piece of land, how does one do cleanup on half the site? How does one fill, provide that fill that the developer talked about, on half the site? How does one consider access into the site, parking, access to the utilities for only half the project? Because the other half would be on the other site, but we're not even talking about that. I don't understand how you can even plan this and add on top of that the timing associated with the modification of the intersection right there, with only half of this project being considered at this time. But you've already put out or agreed, or will be agreeing, to put out a contract for design of the intersection. This doesn't fit. I don't see that anyone is thinking this through and doing good planning. I just don't see it. The developer said they've hired TerraCon to do a Phase 1 and Phase 2. I asked the city to get copies of those and then make those copies available to the public. I would like to be notified when you do get it, and I will put in a FOIA for it, because I want to see the information that they've got after 20 years, when the first one was done, like you all know. Also including, what are we getting out of the monitoring wells? When was the last time that the monitoring wells were done, were evaluated? And we've talked about liability, but an even more question is ethics. The workers, at a minimum, have the potential to be exposed to contaminated soil. So we need to look at it from not only liability, but also from ethics. And I think blue chip has already taken care of the liability. It was said the other night by one of the aldermen that when people are getting off the boat, this is going to be the first thing they see. Actually, the first thing they see is a disgraceful city park where the flood mitigation contract, that project is not even partially done. It's like half-done. There's still equipment, there's still piles of dirt, there's still big conduits.
Yeah, you're talking about the LLP, this site, the Riverwatch site. Can you address your comments to that, please?
Well, I am. I'm responding to something that an alderman said as it relates to this.
You're talking about a different site entirely. This is about the Riverwatch site, please.
I'm talking about River Heritage Park.
And this discussion is about Riverwatch. If you could keep your comments to that, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I'm just responding to what an alderman said. But anyway, I really think this needs better planning. I really am surprised it's up on the agenda already. I think that we need to have the attachments to the agreement in order to make a decision and see how it would work together for doing half the site. I just can't see it being efficient, productive, as well as in the relationship it has to the intersection. I really want you to think about it. Thank you.
Next, please.
J.J. Condon, third ward. If I may, I'm going to read from an email that I haven't finished composing, and then I'll send it to you when I get done. But I'm speaking today in support of the Riverwatch Place development. As a resident of the downtown of Davenport for over 10 years, I believe that neglecting an opportunity to collaborate with a local developer with a proven track record to invest in a highly visible, long vacant parcel with unique challenges to make for a project that generates more tax revenue and has more benefits for the city would be a big misstep. I know as a city council, you often hear frustrations expressed and concerns over the overabundance of car washes that are being built. It's a common misunderstanding that aldermen decide where and what investments should be made. These sort of developments are usually built by out-of-town investors with no familiarity with the city who are focused solely on traffic counts and quick cash flow. In contrast, we have a local developer with deep roots in our community, a proven track record, particularly in the downtown Davenport area. Pete Stopless has a unique talent, not just for filling spaces with generic developments, but for creating vibrant amenities. His exceptional ability to connect with diverse investors and passionate business owners ranging from bakers to musicians, restaurateurs and merchants, even Hollywood screenwriters, allows for high-quality builds and innovative business models that make downtown Davenport brick and mortars an experience that's viable and has longevity. As a for-profit developer, he has the terrible affliction of actually giving a darn what these spaces look like. He cares about creating aesthetically pleasing results that contribute to a community in which he lives. That's exactly what the public wants, built in the place of a car wash. And looking back in 10 years in our time on council, I don't think anyone will look at a still vacant parking lot and think that that was the best good. As a former alderman, I value the professional manner in which the City of Davenport adopts policies, ordinances, and codes. I have an appreciation for the professional staff as they engage with the developers and their hired professionals early to help shape proposed developments into projects that meet and exceed standards that are set. And downtown, there's an additional scrutiny provided by the Design Review Board. All of this is in place to ensure that we do not get stuck with subpar development. This process protects generational interest the city has in these developments and creates a greater return on investment for the taxpayer. It also provides protections and integrity for the developments' investors themselves. When a local developer with a proven track record collaborates with city staff to comply with and exceed these standards in the absence of legitimate opposition from the neighborhood, my focus as an alderman was typically on how we could facilitate approval rather than identifying obstacles that have not been raised by the subject matter experts. I appreciate that this is a tax credit item. The City of Davenport, the State of Iowa, and even the federal government have designated specific geographic areas for uniquely challenging sites to qualify for incentives. They are actively encouraging developers to pursue possibilities in this area. There's a whole area of expertise aligning these specific uses and specific sites with the programs, and some are sitting on the shelf and some require a little bit more creativity. But the simple fact is, this is the exact site, the exact sort of site that these programs are designed for. And while you can become well-versed in these programs, they require considerable effort and engagement by the developer to work with. It is not the path of least resistance to make money as a developer. We're local to have a local team willing to take a shot at this site. Why downtown and when will downtown Davenport have enough? Unfortunately, not all locations possess the potential for growth, even if the right incentives are in place. Investments made by previous generations of city council and business sector, the investments by previous generations are working. We have a thriving mixed-income and mixed-use neighborhood, and the marketplace is telling us it is not saturated and it can handle more. We can be geographically equitable for the sake of being equitable with some of these programs, but you have to show a proven track record of financial success. The State of Iowa shares this vision, as evidenced by the decision to invest significantly in downtown Davenport through the destination, Davenport, Iowa, funding the initiative. In Davenport, we're committed to thoughtful and strategic approach to placemaking. As the development evolves, we aim to create enduring sense of place and future. As these developers come and go and as the business owners come and go, we'll be left with a lasking sense of place. Thank you.
Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor City Council. Peter Tokar, I'm president of the Quad City Chamber of Commerce. So economic development is and continues to be a priority for the Quad Cities. Region placemaking, downtowns, and riverfront developments have taken a position as a high-priority area for the cities that we've, that call Quad Cities home, Davenport being one of them. We've had lots of conversations with staff about the importance of downtown development. Large-scale economic development projects, such as our many riverfront developments in the Quad Cities, can have a domino or snowball effect on others. The first approved project can act as that first domino that continues the momentum with other projects. And looking at the constraints in our market right now with elevated construction costs, interest rates, labor costs, opportunities for significant investment are becoming harder and harder to find, especially on sites that have additional development challenges. So in light of that trend, we are supportive of economic development projects such as this, that will bring jobs, new tax revenue, and investment to downtowns and to Davenport and to the riverfront district.
Thank you. Anyone else? Name and order or address.
Bob McGirburn, I believe, seventh ward. The last time a hotel motel was built in downtown Davenport, I had to look it up, it was some time. And I want to remind you that we're coming up on the 25-year anniversary of River Renaissance. And I was downtown Davenport the Friday after Thanksgiving, and I was just blown away at the activity and the liveliness and the commerce that was happening at 9:30 at night as we went to go see Wicked. Just amazing. Vacancy rained our downtown in 1999. We have come so far, and momentum continues to require effort. I'm glad this is back on the table again, because what really brought me down here was our last cycle and the bad government that our community witnessed. On that side of the dial, I know, because I had the job, our responsibility is to make sure government works, no matter what the outcome is. Things pass, things fail, but we can't let our own individual self-will as an elected reign on an issue and rob the petitioner the equitable process of government. An abstention for not being prepared should be met by a table or a request for a table. It's your responsibility to make sure government works. I support this activity that's going on. I just was in downtown Louisville. We haven't had a hotel developed in downtown in some time. It's going to bring a new product to our downtown. There was no activity in the Quad Cities the weekend of Thanksgiving like what was in downtown Davenport. We all have experienced and seen the development over 25 years. This is an extra component of that, and it needs to continue. What they're asking for the community is for recovery of taxable on their services in the future. This is a no-brainer. There are site concerns. There's always been site concerns. They wanted to put a McDonald's there years ago. A McDonald's. This is our downtown. It's a difficult site. It's been a difficult site since Anton Leclerc's walk in the grounds. What you have before you is the continuation of momentum. If it's developed smart, if the community and our resources make sure it's done right, we cannot let individual elected self-will get in the way of commerce in our community. So I ask you to support this and to continue to work better together.
Good evening. My name is Dale Gilmore, and I live in resident sixth ward. I'm confused. I was at the meeting last Tuesday when the tax incentives proposed by the developer were denied. This was also headlines in last Friday's Quad City Times. Now, here it is again. Oh, sure, a couple sentences have been added or changed, but the application is 95% the same as it was last week. Now, I'm not against the project. Don't get me wrong. You know, I'm for the project with the proper with the proper restrictions or conditions. Now, it's my opinion that an item may appear, may only appear on the next agenda following a no vote if it's motion for reconsideration. Now, the current one is 95% of what it was last week. I would like to ask, who motioned for reconsideration? Who seconded that motion? What was the final vote? As a former parliamentarian for the Iowa J.C.'s for almost seven years, I believe that a nearly identical item to reappear on the agenda following defeat requires a motion to reconsider, and I won't bore you with the details of how that's done. Did Robert's Rules of Order change? Or has someone tried Or has someone tried to change the rules? Something stinks. In my almost 25 years of attending these meetings, to the best of my memory, I've never seen this done. I know most of you remember City Administrator Malin. How many of you remember City Administrator Pierce?
Kyle Carter, proud Fifth Ward resident and executive director of the Downtown Davenport Partnership. If this project was easy, it'd have been done by now. Incentives of this nature that you guys are considering were built explicitly for projects that but for them, they probably would never happen. It's been a decade since anybody was swung at this, let alone succeeded. If that's not enough market analysis to know how difficult this site is, a decade of nothing should be all the evidence you need to know that when you're considering financial incentives for something like this, it is exactly the case study that you should feel good about. This is a project that's going to benefit all of Davenport, not just downtown. This is a tax base that goes to the general fund when it's created. There are very few downsides, and as we've discussed in prior meetings, little to no risk for the city itself, which is a reasonable concern for you all to have considering the history of this site. I get that. Thankfully, I think city staff did an excellent job explaining why that's not the city's problem, it's frankly the developer's problem, and one of great risk. Now, the irony of that is if it were truly bad, the federal government would get involved and help. I hope that isn't the case, but in the absolute worst-case scenario, that is who comes into this scenario at that point through Iowa DNR and otherwise. You know, meanwhile, we just cannot miss opportunities when the economy is as rough as it is. These opportunities and these windows come and go very quickly. Like I said, it's been 10 years since somebody even tried. Meanwhile, at the last council meeting, we very graciously approved nearly $7 million of financial incentives for a factory going out in the north end of town, which is a great decision, and I applaud every one of you for voting for it. It was on the consent agenda. That's a corporate company, not from the Quad Cities. We are roasting a local developer for a fraction of the amount of money on a project that's frankly harder. So I just don't understand why we took one project and had put a microscope on it, and we took another and had no dialogue at all whatsoever for much greater value. So if we're truly concerned about good use of incentives, how was one a great idea and this one not? They're both great ideas. I'm not knocking the other one. It was great, and I'm glad you did it. But ultimately, what we have in front of us is an opportunity, and I want to stick to the same commentary I had last time. All you're voting on is an opportunity for the developer to maybe make this happen, and at no risk to this city if it doesn't happen. You don't spend a dime, you lose nothing. So I implore you to please consider this project. I understand things live and die on a vote, but in this case, I just fail to see what we're losing if we don't provide the opportunity. I appreciate your consideration, the downtown community appreciates your consideration. And as a guy who lives here and is a taxpayer, with just my normal guy hat on, I really am rooting for this as somebody who just wants to see the tax base grow so that my own property taxes don't go up over time, because that only happens through growth and opportunities like the one before us. Thank you for your consideration.
Is there anyone else in the public? Seeing no one, we'll go to council and ultimate Rick Dunne.
Thank you. Could we have Director Berger come up, please? I have a few questions. This is the same, this is the same party, same developer, city, except for, right? Nothing's changed there?
Bruce Berger, Community and Economic Development. Yes.
It's the same development, same 19 million town place suites with 88 rooms, rooftop patio, stuff like that. That's the same, that didn't change.
Correct.
Same plans they showed us last week, that has, none of that's changed, everything's the same.
Correct.
The same financial incentives from the city, the 75% rebate, that hasn't changed.
Correct.
Okay. So only a couple minor amendments were made, correct?
I don't know if I'd call them minor, but yeah, there were some amendments that were made.
So them are the same amendments that we were briefed on email last Monday, yet nobody up here made them. You know, and I had asked if anybody was going to make an amendment here, knowing that I had concerns, maybe I should have made them myself. So really, there's nothing new there. So that's, basically, we're back to voting close to the same agreement we had last week, in my mind. Just my, that's all I got. Thank you. So my next question is where I'm really hung up, right, is the motion to reconsider, right? The rules require a motion to reconsider, as Mr. Gilmore stated. Motions must be made by those in the prevailing party at the same or next meeting. Why aren't we following the rules? What does, what does our rules that were adopted in 2015 state? You know, like Mr. Gilmore, I've been around a long time, I've been up here 11 years, and I've never seen anything come back like this. So that's a concern. So I guess then you get to the why. Who made the decision to make a few amendments and put it back on the agenda? Who discussed the amendments with the developer and under whose direction? I don't understand why such would happen immediately after it failed to pass. Failed to pass on Tuesday, we go on Thanksgiving holiday, and it's thrown back on the agenda at the last minute today. That raises some serious concerns to me. I have serious concerns of how this has come before us. I have legal concerns as to whether or not the rules are being violated by deciding being placed back on the agenda. Let me be clear, I'm not anti-development. I've supported every development that has come before us. You know, I just have issues with how this has taken place and how it's been handled in, you know, as far as, you know, are we following the rules? I don't know. That's, that's my concern, so I'll leave it at that.
Alderman Burkeholder?
Thank you. I will second those concerns because I personally have asked for things to be brought back and was told, I'm sorry, when the council votes and the decision's made, that's final. So why is this back on the agenda the very next time? It was not reconsidered. It failed on 11/26. Thank you.
Almenjojto?
Thank you. Just say I'm glad it's back on the agenda. I'm glad it's back on the agenda quickly, right? I am supportive of this, I was supportive of it last cycle. I'll keep those comments there. I don't think I have anything else productive to say, so. That's where I'm at.
One on the phone who would like to, I just want to make sure we've got a couple people on the phone. So I have a couple of questions, I guess, there were, that were asked. I don't know if Administrator Maxiner or staff or Attorney Huff would like to respond to the questions about it being back on the agenda.
I'd be glad to.
Okay.
The decision to bring this back was in my direction. I asked Bruce to work on this on Wednesday. He was off on Wednesday. I was bugging him over the weekend, trying to get some of the concerns and questions answered that the city council had expressed. I had reason to believe, now let me back up for a minute, this was not through any discussions with anybody. I had reason to believe that there'd be a motion to renew, and I'll let corporate council talk about the legalities of the motion to renew or reconsider, what have you. I had reason to believe that these were going to be, there was going to be a motion in a second to renew this discussion. To me, I thought rehashing the existing agreement without trying to address the concerns would drive a deeper wedge in this council. And I refrained from wanting to do that. I think government moves at the speed of trust. That's somebody else's phrase, not mine. But I think most people think of that being the public's trust of the government. I think that starts with the trust among you folks on the dais up there. You have to trust each other to have those discussions. You have to trust staff, staff has to trust you. I brought that back because I didn't want you to be in a position to reconsider the same agreement without trying to address some of those concerns. That was my intent.
Thank you. I will try to make this brief, but Robert's Rules is not a brief book, as everyone would like to see. So I will start at what a motion to reconsider is for. A motion to reconsider is a specific item designed, a specific motion designed to bring something back to the floor at the same meeting that it was considered and voted upon, whether that is down or in the affirmative. That motion must be made by a person from a failing side to bring it back. It's then voted on. If the motion to reconsider passes, the item is then placed back on the agenda as if it had never been voted on in the same meeting. That would be Robert's, in Robert's Rules of Order, there's about a, I don't know, two columns of index on reconsidering. The first one says in parenthetical, reconsidering a motion to bring back a question from the same session if it, as if it had not been voted upon. A session is considered a meeting. The next thing that we address is what's known as a motion to renew. A motion to renew, which is Robert's Rule 8:15, and I'm using for those of you at home the 12th edition of Robert's Rules, is a motion to introduce again something that has not been adopted. So therefore, if it has been defeated and not adopted at a previous meeting, a motion to renew can be brought. The conditions under which a motion to be renewed, can be renewed, that is, can be introduced as if new, having been previously made and disposed of without adoption, are closely related to the freedom of each new session, meaning meaning, and to the distinction between a meeting and a session. As stated in other rules, the same or substantially the same question cannot be brought up a second time during the same session, except by means of a parliamentary motion such as a motion to reconsider. At any later session, on the other hand, any motion that is still applicable can normally be renewed unless it has come over from a previous meeting, meaning it was left on the table and not disposed of at a previous meeting. So it then goes on to outline several, or kind of the procedure for a motion to renew. A motion to renew is to, as Administrator Maxiner designed or said, is considering the same thing that was before you. No changes, no nothing. That's what that's used for. If a vote, if a motion to renew is made, it must be voted upon. If it was noticed that a motion to renew was going to be brought to the floor before the meeting, it requires a majority vote. If it was brought on the floor with no prior notice, it requires a two-third vote to pass. If it passes, the item is if it had not been disposed of and is back on the agenda, and then you vote on it or can vote on it again and take other actions. In my mind, the changes made to this agreement, with its stricter requirements for the use of the environmental program, the clawback provisions for non-compliance with the building of the sidewalks, and other language as to the material breach and what can occur, do make this a significantly tougher agreement and therefore changes it in a significant way. If those additions were not made, we would not have a way to clawback monies given if the sidewalks were not built. If they, if it was not made and the developer decided, eh, well, it's not in the agreement, I'm not going to do the land program, no recourse. Now we have recourse. Now we can hold the developer accountable to the things in that agreement, or no incentive is received. So that's why I think this is substantially different because of these provisions. Yes, it's the same incentive. Yes, it has many of the same terms, but the requirements on the developer are substantially different than what they were a week ago.
Thank you. No, I was, those were questions answered. I had a question if I could. I don't see anybody asking, ringing in right now, so, and I don't hear anybody on the phone. So y'all yell out on the phone if you want to talk. If I could, Administrator, could you talk a little bit about the land recycling program? If you're not prepared tonight, next week, but just again, we talked a little bit about it last week, but it was not a, it was not the last two weeks, but it wasn't really a reality now. This is part of the agreement. So could you give us a little, there's more people in the room tonight, a little more information about what this means to the agreement and what this puts, what grammars of this are?
This is really a voluntary partnership with IDNR. They work with them on the conditions of the development, construction. It talks about land, groundwater, it talks about what happens to the soil removed from the site, and there's consultation on any number of items that would be involved in that development process. So this is getting IDNR involved in that development process and getting them to sign off on the different construction practices of this. That's my understanding. I'm not an expert in that area.
I understand. I, and it does require additional environmental work as part of this, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, all right. Okay. Let's see, and just getting to the incentives, again, we have, if this, there are two things. We have your TE on one of the buildings, and we have the hotel motel tax, and then the other is your TE. If the building with the hotel motel, that includes a hotel motel tax, isn't built, what does the developer get from the city?
Well, certainly, there's no rebate of hotel motel.
So they get, what is the number?
Zero.
Zero, okay. If the other building isn't built, what does the developer get from the city?
They certainly don't get the tax exemption on that property. There's no, there's nothing that we spend to provide to the developer, zero.
Right, zero. Okay, thank you very much. So being mindful of the care that we know we all have to take with our, with going forward, with financing, with how people are being taxed in the state of Iowa. If we're doing incentives, I understand being careful about incentives, I heard that, but I believe that we have to think about incentives that if there is no gain, there is no gain for us, there is no gain for the developer. So I feel like this does that. It's a cleaner incentive that way. It's not something that we have to do upfront, it's not money we have to pay upfront, and those are the things going forward, I think, because we do need to continue to grow our property base. We're going to have to do that and probably even more diligently. The other thing I would say is something I heard tonight here, when money comes, wherever it comes in the city, and when I came to council in 2017, there was, everything was happening in 53rd Street. I was, you know, and when I came to Davenport, everything was happening in 53rd Street. I looked at it sometimes with envy living in my little beat-up neighborhood, but, you know, didn't really have the sense then that things that were happening in that area, which is being heavily developed at this point, that money was going into the city coffers as well, for everybody, for Third Ward, for Fifth Ward, for Fourth Ward, it didn't matter where the money was made. Downtown since that time, since I moved to the city, has Downtown since that time, since I moved to the city, has become another growth area. And so the money that comes in, the incentives and the tax base that comes out of downtown doesn't just stay in downtown, it goes everywhere in the city. It goes into the public coffers. And that, and things, development often comes with incentives. We understand that, as, you know, the fair Oaks, which is going to be a great thing, and it's going to be a great thing for the city. I, with all my heart, wish that, you know, the West Side, and how many times have I heard people say, oh, well, why can't you tell this company they need to be over on the West End? I want to see our West End developed as well, and that will come. But right now, it seems the stronger areas, some areas have more ways to develop more growth in the city, to bring more growth to the city. I hope that continues and spreads into other areas. But I think we have to remember that those dollars come and they go into the general, you know, at the end of the day, when, you know, 10 years from now, whenever, the money that's coming in is going to the city, and it's not going to one ward or another ward. So I just would like to make that comment, and I see Alderman doing.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. I have some questions and some comments. I'll start off by some comments. I was listening to some of the comments made here tonight, and specifically some of the defamatory comments that were made against me tonight. I want to make it unequivocally clear to the public that I do not show up to council unprepared. I've never walked in here without having read the full agenda, done my homework. Unfortunately, though, when information is not provided in a timely fashion, or it's provided last minute and it has, requires follow-up, I do take my duty to the people of Davenport, a fiduciary duty, an oath that I took to do the right thing. And if I don't feel that I have the information necessary at that time, I'm not going to take a vote, because I am going to do the right thing for the people of Davenport and also as an officer of the court. Now, a couple of questions, legal. I heard you, I want you to make sure, actually, I want to make sure I heard it correctly, when you said a motion to reconsider is only done at the same meeting, because it was my understanding pursuant to Robert's Rules, that it can be at the same meeting or at a subsequent meeting. Question one. And question number two, do we not already, as a city council, have rules on the books that specifically discuss a motion to reconsider and how it is supposed to take place?
So a motion to reconsider is generally designed for it at the same meeting. Robert's Rules does say that you can use it in a close-in-time subsequent meeting. So maybe the next meeting. So you can choose to. I would advise that there's other vessels to do that. A renewal, or a motion to renew, is anybody, a motion to reconsider has to be somebody from the prevailing side on an issue. So depending on who wants to bring it, I guess they can have their choice of motions.
Our current council rules, are they not very specific as to motions to reconsider?
You don't have that document right in front of me. If you want to hand it to me, I can read it. It's markedly the same as what I just stated, if I'm reading the right section, but I'll be happy to read it. Must be made later in the same meeting or at the next meeting, so close in time, of the body, must be made by someone who voted on the prevailing side and was not, or was not present to vote. A motion to reconsider cannot be reconsidered. If a motion to reconsider passes, the action item is placed back on the agenda and must be moved and voted upon again unless tabled. So by our rules and by Robert's rules, you can do it at the same meeting, or you can do it at, by our rules, because ours' rules would take precedent here, at the next meeting. So if you went two meetings, you couldn't do it again. So however, that's one option. Our rules do not, and I know I'm going a little bit off-script from your question, our rules do not specifically address a motion to renew, and so therefore we default to Robert's Rules, which is why I read that one. And our, to my knowledge and my review of these rules, we do not have a specific provision stating you can't bring a motion back ever, or you have to wait a certain amount of time, or you have to have substantial difference. Now, what I will say is that commentary on a motion to renew highly frowns upon it if you don't think the vote is going to change. Don't make a motion to renew, and you could be called out of order for it if it looks like it's just a delay tactic, or it's meant to just rehash something that's not going to change. So while I give you the power of a motion to renew or let you know about it, I would say it's to be used sparingly and only in situations where the vote is, has the potential to change. New information comes to light, opinions change about something, a member wasn't present to vote, a member, you know, I guess a member could abstain, and if their abstention is something that can be cured, i.e. not a conflict of interest, theoretically that could change the vote count, so it could be proper. Again, it's up to the members to decide what motions to bring. In this case, the motion before you is on an agreement that's, in my opinion, because of the provisions requiring, making additional requirements on the developer, is substantially different, or at least different enough that we have, we, that it addresses some of the issues previously raised in meetings with council.
Do you want this back? I have copies.
Okay.
Just for clarification, then, what is before the council today is what type of a motion?
It is just a simple motion on do you approve this agreement or not, as it says. It is not a motion to renew, it is not a motion to reconsider, and I would be remiss if I left out one other one, because it's called a motion to rescind. A motion to rescind is a motion that, if a motion prevails, so we've talked about a motion to reconsider and a motion to renew where a motion may fail, and you want to bring it back, well, what about if you want to bring back a motion that's passed? Because facts have changed. That's called a motion to rescind or a motion to remove a previously passed motion. You can do that. It has the same requirements as a motion to renew, and also, again, should be used sparingly like a motion to renew, because if the vote count's not going to change, why would we do it? It could be a delay tactic, it could be called out of order if it's seen as malicious. So those are the kind of the three types of things if you want to reconsider, I'm going to use the word reconsider in a broader sense, to reconsider a previous action by council. So.
Couple more questions, and I don't know if this is for you or for Administrator, or maybe Director Berger, but I want to make sure that I understand correctly. The amendments made to the agreement, are they not all amendments that were already put forth before council in written communication?
So I would say that they were all drafted on responses and information given to council. I wouldn't say that that language specifically had all been put, some of it was. The material breach language had already been put before council. The clawback provision had not. The, I think it had been proposed that the land program should be mandatory, but had not been kind of proposed in the state that it is in this agreement. So does that answer your question?
So just so that it's clear, the verbatim wasn't brought forth, but it was something that the council already had to consider.
I would.
The substance of the essential amendments.
In all but one. I mean, the clawback provision was not considered, and that was something that I felt was appropriate based on the fact that we had a sequence of events that had to occur, and we're going to incur what I would say out of order, right? The hotel was going to be developed before, the sidewalks would have to be developed because of our own construction process, which would make those sidewalks probably have to get changed anyways. So in order to ensure that the sidewalks get built, we put the clawback provision there to say, okay, well, if you don't complete the sidewalks after we're done with the roadway, then we're going to clawback any monies that we have previously abated to you. So that, I would say that's a fairly significant change in and of itself, but then the other ones, as proposed, I feel like gave more meat to the agreement. And, but to your point, yes, council could have brought those as motions to amend at the previous meeting, if they so chose, but that was not raised.
But council had knowledge, is I guess where I'm, one trying to get at. It's not anything that came, it's not a new fact that came into existence after the vote took place. It was knowledge council had prior to the vote taking place.
To two of the three, yes.
Okay. I don't think I have any further questions at this time. I will echo some of the statements made by my colleague, or a couple of my colleagues. I would ask that it be put on discussion to allow adequate time for some of the legal concerns to have further follow-up, and I would be requesting to meet with Corporate Council Huff on such, to ensure that we are in fact following the rules that are currently in place and that everything is actually being done in a legal manner. You're floor black.
I will just let you know that I am not available Friday, otherwise, anytime, or by phone.
I had, I was going to ask R. Dunn, if, T. Dunn, did you, is there anything, I'd seen, did you want to speak? Okay, he was on the phone, okay. Alderman, Rick Dunn, please, thank you.
Thank you. Like, I look at this, again, you know, we've been following these rules in motion to reconsider. To me, the easiest thing here to do would have been, hey, we're going to make these changes. Somebody should, could have reached out to one of us that voted no and said, hey, does this meet your criteria to move this thing forward? Would you think about reconsidering? But that didn't happen. Nobody's reached out to me, I don't know about the rest of my colleagues that voted no. But to me, that would have been, I guess that would have been a good starting place. And then maybe one of us that, maybe our questions did get answered, that actually could support this project, could have been the ones who brought it back. But that's not how this happened, so, that's all I got. Thanks.
Anyone from, on the phone?
Yeah, Marion.
Oh.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Alderman.
Okay. Yeah, you know, I, if we're talking about historically, what the council rules have been, I know historically, past corporate councils have not allowed people to abstain if not for a conflict of interest. In fact, I know of aldermen who have asked to abstain, for whatever reason, they didn't want to break the tie or vote, and, but they didn't have a conflict of interest, and they were told by prior corporation councils that they in fact had to vote if they didn't have a conflict of interest. And if we're talking about, you know, the way we could have handled things better, and I agree, a lot of people could have handled things better here, instead of abstaining last week and surprising everyone without asking any questions, like had been asked today, the abstention could have been a request to table again, or wait until the next meeting again, since we've done, to gather more information. But that tactic wasn't used either. Now, nobody reached out to me and asked, or said that this was going to be brought back this cycle, although you can probably gather, I'm in favor of it being brought back, because I think when we have somebody who is trying to do business in the city of Davenport, and trying to generate revenue and do nice things in our city, they at least deserve a fair shake at a 10% council to get their, to get their vote, and I think that's what we owe this project and this developer. And then I also wanted to provide some clarification. I've been hearing some conversations regarding the questions of the 3% property tax cap and what the impacts are of future development, and I think there is some confusion about that property tax cap, which only relates to property taxes for residential, does not currently count for commercial or rental properties. And so that cap is just for residential, it's an aggregate across the entire state, and I'm afraid that if we get the idea in Davenport that we don't need to grow our tax base because we have an assessment cap on residential, that we're going to end up in a bad spot financially. And I'll say it again, nine years ago, we faced a decrement where we had to look at public safety and look at firefighters and look at police officers because we didn't grow our tax base enough. And we have not had to do that, because we have been a pretty pro-development city council for the last decade, and we should not go away from that. We need to, we need to continue to grow our tax base. Understand, our biggest expenditure is public safety, firefighters, police officer, over 70% of our budget, okay? We do union negotiations with them, and we know how much their budget is going to increase year to year. We have to match that increase with the increase in our tax base, or we will decrement. That is, that is what we have to do. And so I would just implore the city council to continue to be a pro-development council that understands that we have to grow the tax base if we want to be a financially sustainable city. And I have asked City Administrator Max Siner to look into providing the council a little bit more information on that residential, that 3% residential tax cap and how it impacts the city. And so I think he's looking at that. Thank you for your time, I don't have any other comments.
I have Alderwoman Newton your second time. Go ahead.
Thank you. A little surprised to hear one of the comments that the person that's bringing this forth didn't know it was coming forth. Administrator Max Siner, can you please pull up the agenda and tell me what it says there in terms of who's bringing this forth? Perhaps, maybe I misread that.
I don't see that other than the chair and the vice chair of the community development is named at the top of the section. I don't see.
Isn't there a section where it goes into the history, and doesn't it talk about the history and the two that requested it be put back on?
I think you're referring to probably what's digitally available versus.
Correct.
What's been printed out for us here today does not have that information.
I'm sorry, when I say that, I mean the entire thing with all attachments. I didn't bring 300 and some pages with me, so that's why I was asking. That could be pulled up by someone. And while that's being pulled up, I have a legal question for Corporate Council. Under Iowa law, under Iowa law, is the city allowed to stop someone from abstaining for a legitimate reason?
Under no Iowa law that I am aware of, should a person be stopped from abstaining? Under no Robert's Rule of Order that I am aware of, should a person be stopped from abstaining? Robert's Rules are kind of what governs here, because we have no local rule on this, except for, I believe if you have a conflict, you can be requested to reveal the conflict, which I think is a good practice. Where Robert's Rules kind of goes with abstentions is that abstentions should be thoughtful. They are the personal choice of the person making them, they should not be deterred, but they should also be governed responsibly and not used as a tactic to prevent votes or cancel quorums or do anything like that. And if someone on council suspects that's what's going on, then they can call it out. However, one, being able to abstain for lack of sufficient time to review or based on the circumstances here, is, isn't, is okay. There's nothing that prescribes that you cannot do it, as we sit here today. And I would caution that abstentions, just like recusals of judges in courts, should be protected. be protected and that that's the personal choice of the person making it and that there are other mechanisms to govern what I would say would be abuse of that rule if someone feels that that's being abused.
And in your legal opinion, is doing it once a legal abuse?
Without more facts and circumstances surrounding the motivations of the person who did it, I cannot make a judgment call on that. That is, if if the person did it for legitimate reasons, and I have absolutely no problem with it, if they did it 100 times, if it's being but every subsequent time might get a little more suspicious. But again, if it's a truly held belief, just like a conflict of interest cannot be resolved, you have a conflict, you have a conflict.
Thank you. Administrator, were you able to find that part?
I was. There is a background section that talks about the the vote and the outcome of that. The paragraph continues to say, "Two council members, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Jobjen, redirected staff to place an action item on the agenda for this upcoming last cycle of this calendar year." That'd be the COW of 12-4 and the CC of 12-11 for this project with several changes to the proposed development agreement. I will stand by my earlier comments that I was not aware of those, that activity. I think there was a thought that that we would reconsider the agreement as it originally stood, which was my thought that I wanted to try try to attempt to address the concerns of the city council before we had a reconsideration of that. I did not get direction from from anybody on the city council or the mayor to bring this back.
Yes, but but I just want to make sure that the agenda and what's been posted to the public is in fact factually correct.
That is what is stated in that correct.
And that's factually correct.
That may be correct to Director Berger. It was not sent to me in that fashion.
Oh, no, I understand that, but just making sure that's right.
Yep.
Okay, nothing further.
And Alder Woman Burkholder, second go. Okay, all right. Alderman Jobjen, second go.
No, first go.
Second, that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're splitting a lot of hairs here tonight, so I can see where one might get lost in the weeds a little bit. I guess this is for our for our city administrator. How do resolutions and ordinances get placed on the agenda normally? What are the mechanisms for which those those can happen? Right? Does it always require two council members to a motion and a second to get items on the?
I would say the vast majority of the time those generated are generated from staff moving forward.
Yeah. Thank you. To the point, A, again, I thank you very much for putting it on there. B, yeah, I I wrote an email requesting that this come back, and if I need to do something to get it back on quickly, I would. So obviously, there's a vessel through which that was not needed. I'm glad it's back. Simple. Let's let's address the issue. Let's have the questions answered. We got time, do it.
I see Alderman. Attorney Huff, did you want to answer a question? If I could take that. And then Mr. Dunn.
Yeah, so I just want to address Alderman Jobjen's question. I believe it is our city ordinances that state, A, the mayor, two councilmen, or the city administrator may place items on the agenda. So that's what our ordinance is saying.
Okay. Now, first go around, Alderman T Dunn.
Okay, my my question, this goes back about 10 and a half months ago, probably 11 months ago, when two alderperson walked up to a city administrator, former city administrator, asking to put something back on the agenda that passed. Why were we unable to do that?
I was not present or employed by the city at that time. However, so I cannot comment as to why it was done. However, if you came to me today and asked me the same question, I would advise you on what a motion to rescind is if you were trying to bring back something that passed. I'd advise you on a motion renew if you want to bring back something that was voted down but you wanted to be brought back up. Or if it was on the next meeting, I would advise you you could do a motion to reconsider. I'd also let you know how you could have a majority vote versus a 2/3 vote and what those requirements would be. So does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I don't see any other alderfolk, anybody on the phone. Mayor Mattson, you had asked to speak.
Thanks for letting me speak, Madam Chair. So after all of that, to clarify, in your legal opinion, corporate counsel, there's significant enough change to put this back on. Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I would ask Alderman Jobjen to set the agenda, please, for next week.
I make a motion to place items number one and two on the consent agenda and item number three on the discussion agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. The next series, Public Safety, Alderman Jobjen and Alderman Tim Dunn to discuss. Alderman Jobjen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item under the Public Safety Agenda is a motion approving noise variance requests on listed dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, German American Heritage Center, Chris Kittle Market, 712 West Second Street, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., Saturday, December 14, 2024, outdoor music over 50 dB. And next, Downtown Davenport Partnership, Ice Stravaganza Freight House, 421 West River Drive, 5 p.m. to 10 p.m., Friday, January 17, 2025, 10 a.m. to 10 p.m., Saturday, January 18, 2025, and 10 a.m. to 10 p.m., Saturday, January 19, 2025, outdoor music over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on either of these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read those under section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. Have Chill Vibes Lounge, LLC, 114 Myrtle Street, Unit A B, outdoor area premises update slash expansion, license type Class C liquor on premises. And then there's those items under section B, the annual licenses renewals, which I do not read but are there for your review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of those liquor license items? Anyone from council? Mr. Mayor?
Not now, but chief, consider for Chill Vibes, providing the council some information on any calls or for next time, please. Thank you. I'd ask for that if that's okay, Mr. Jobjen.
Would you ask for it to be on discussion or just consent?
No, just information for you all to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll keep that on a consent then. I would then ask Alderman Tim Dunn, please set our agenda.
Make a motion to put all items of public safety on the consent agenda. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Close it back to close it closes Public Safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobjen, Alderman, Tim Dunn. The next series, Public Works, Alderman Rick Dunn will discuss. Alderman Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution accepting work completed under the East 53rd Street Reconstruction Phase One Brady Street Eastern Avenue Project by Minats in the amount of Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting work completed under West 83rd Street and North Zenith Avenue Extension Project by Valley Construction in the amount of $2,183,499.90. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting work completed under Lorton Avenue Overlay and Drainage Improvement Project by Minats in the amount of $628,048.33. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution accepting work completed under West 46th Street, North Lincoln Avenue to North Pine Street Reconstruction Project by CDMI Concrete Contractors in the amount of $436,686.89. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution accepting work completed under the West 13th Street, Brown Street to Scott Street Resurfacing Project by Langman Construction in the amount of $248,652.91. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution accepting work completed under the Compost Facility Aeration Trench Replacement Project by Brant Construction in the amount of $229,776.20. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution accepting the sanitary sewer and manholes associated with the 56 Enclave subdivision. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution approving change order number one in the amount of $200,000 to KE Flatworks for the Goose Creek Trail Phase Three Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution awarding a contract for the engineering services for the Protect Leclerc and Third Street Flood Mitigation and River Drive and Third and Fourth Street Intersection Realignment Project, H.R. Green, in the amount of $615,000, subject to the Iowa Department of Transportation concurrence. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this Alder Woman McGinnis.
There was a a question at yesterday's meeting about the review of the flood plan. Was that meant to for a brief overview of what this is tonight for the next three projects? And is someone prepared to talk about that? If so, could we do that?
Clay Merrick, Engineering Temple Projects, sorry for the the voice. So the next three projects are part of our recent Protect Grant application that the city was successful in achieving. So this is transportation focused for flood mitigation. Specifically for this particular one, it's raising Leclerc and Third Street so that we can maintain access to the Arsenal Bridge, as well as some realignment of the intersections of River Drive at Third and Fourth as well for better turning movements. If you're happy to, what I can do for the next council cycle, I can have some graphics and some stuff put up for a presentation on the whole scale purpose of what this all of these projects are meant to achieve.
I will ask my colleagues. I don't know. Thank you.
Alder Woman Burkholder.
My question for the the flood plan was to have another workshop for all of council so we can see where it's going to be and what we need to do as a city once these items are in place. So that was my question yesterday. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution awarding a contract for the engineering services for to protect Marquette Second to Fourth Street and Rockingham West of Marquette Flood Mitigation Project to H.R. Green in the amount of $573,000, subject to the Iowa Department of Transportation concurrence. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is a resolution awarding a contract for the engineering services for the Protect Second and Gaines Flood Mitigation Project, Shive Hattery, in the amount of $217,410, subject to the Iowa Department of Transportation concurrence. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 12 is a resolution awarding a contract for the engineering services for the Eastern Avenue Bridge over Goose Creek Replacement Project to WHKS and Company in the amount not to exceed $172,200. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 13 is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the compost facility floor modification project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 14 is a resolution accepting a grant in the amount of $70,000 and approving the associated grant agreement with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for the Goose Creek Park Environmental Restoration Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alder Woman Burkholder.
Thank you. Reading through the grant, I did see I read through, and it said that we will be planting some native fruit and nut bearing. I just want to make sure that, number one, they're Iowa native. And number two, are we going to properly remove all the invasive and the plants and vegetation from from this area before do it properly, before we go in and plant all these native plants? So if I could get that answer by next week, that would be great.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 15 is a motion accepting work completed under Goose Creek Trail Connection Project by AmeriCorps LLC in the amount of $79,078.10. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 16 is a motion awarding a contract for the Water Quality Monitoring Project to Environment Net in the amount of $97,910. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alder Woman Burkholder.
Thank you. I know that the city and the county pay for test kits for our water quality and partners of Scott County Watershed do our testing quite regularly. Is this an additional water quality monitoring project? And if so, how is it different?
Director Merrick, could you please explain that? Thank you.
Thank you.
So part of our comprehensive watershed planning that we're doing right now is to take a look back at what previous plans that was originally performed in 2011 by the Iowa DNR. And so we would like to, excuse me, let me rewind myself for a second. One of the the pieces that this particular item will do is go back and monitor the sites that were monitored in 2011 to see how well we have been able to succeed in taking out bacteria and E. coli from the system itself. So there's seven specific locations in the exact locations that we did in 2011 so that we can be able to fairly judge across the board. And it's mainly within Duck Creek, three items specifically in Duck Creek, and then at the the confluence is, I think, Silver, Pheasant, Goose Creek, and Cardinal, excuse me. So and then there's two actual places outside the city where we're curious to see how they're coming into the city on whether or not, you know, agriculture is taking a particular effect on our our system. I'd say this is much more larger in scope. This is also doing flow and a number of other studies that we don't do ourselves. Our our normal ones, which is the ones that you reference, are typically much more smaller in scope compared to this one.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 17 is a motion awarding a contract for the West 46th Street Culvert over Cardinal Creek Guard Rail Installation to Love Well Fence in the amount of $62,350. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 18 is a motion approving the purchase of three Ford pickup trucks from Carl Auto Group in the amount of $90,441 using Iowa Department Administrative Services contract. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 19 is a motion approving the purchase of a portable electric bus charger from Gilligan LLC in the amount of $62,500. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alder Woman McGinnis, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I certainly will. I'll make a motion that all items be put placed on consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and that completes Public Works this evening, Your Honor. Back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. The next series, Finance, Alder Woman Newton will discuss. Alder Woman Newton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Alder Woman Burkholder and I have several finance items to discuss. So the first is first consideration, ordinance to repeal and replace Section 10.16.70 entitled Automated Traffic Enforcement of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, to incorporate updates outlined in the State of Iowa Code, Section 321P. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this? Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item moves on. Item number two, first consideration, ordinance amending Section 13.16.107 entitled rates amount of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, from $6.31 to $6.44 to $6.56 per 100 cubic feet of water as used as used to determined by water meter readings, per bill rates for monthly commercial bills from $24.08 to $24.56 to $25.05 per bill rates for monthly residential bills from $12.96 to $13.18 to $13.40 per bill rates for quarterly residential bills from $32.88 to $33.53 to $34.19 and per bill rates for quarterly quarterly commercial bills from $32.38 to $33.03 to $33.69. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item moves on. Item number three is a resolution adopting the rules of order for the city... For the Davenport City Council. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? So, please step forward, state your name, address your ward.
I apologize, but based on what I've witnessed tonight, I don't really think they're ready to go through as they are. There's lots of room for improvement, and I see that the three minutes has been continued, making it legit, the three minutes versus the five minutes. But I'm hoping somewhere in there, we can add that public speaking will be streamed live to people at home because those comments at the end, we've learned over this last year, have had people in crisis and, one, being cut short by two minutes, but, two, not being broadcast doesn't allow other members of the public who may be experiencing the same problems, but may be handicapped and unable to come out to the meetings, and they're not able to partake in this public meeting and even the public comments at the end, which do have value, to those who choose to listen to the public and appreciate what the public brings to this because we do have a symbiotic relationship. You need us, we need you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please step forward. Name, address, reward.
Judith Lee, second ward. I ask that this be put on the discussion agenda. There are some changes that I sent you, recommendations. One, some of the key ones, I found one that might be in violation of the open meeting law or for by not notifying the public of special sessions. I think we ought to add that absence for a reason is okay. I'd like to build on what she said. I believe that five minutes for agenda items, regardless of whether it's committee of the whole or city council, should be kept. And if not, then it's arbitrary and capricious. Why is 1.3 and 1.5? I think they both ought to be five for agenda items. And I also agree that we should start again live streaming the public comment so that people now or even in the future can understand what the public is saying as well if they cannot attend. I also would like to recommend that this say that people cannot be active on their electronic devices at the dais. I also talked about what Robert's Rules of Order says for... There's no requirement for rationale for abstention. And I looked in four different places, and I've identified those places for you. A question I had was if the mayor is gone, we have the mayor pro tem, and there's a 5-5 tie with the mayor pro tem voting, then who breaks that tie? I think that ought to be discussed in here. There's also in Rule 20, two Robert's Rules of Order, one called lay on the table and the other postponed. If those are going to be mentioned specifically, I looked them up, just like Attorney Huff looked up the other ones, and there's multiple sections about those two. I think if it's going to be in there, it ought to be described and how it would be used, and also what is the difference between postpone and tabling? I think those ought to be put in there. I also think if we're going to talk about ad hoc committees, we should also talk about task forces that may have members of the public. There ought to be a written scope for both ad hoc committees as well as task forces, and there ought to be a requirement that the results of both of them be made public at the end of the meetings because we still have one that's open on the racial splurs. That has never been closed or the results brought up to the public. I also believe that the basic procedures used to conduct business in Davenport should not be incorporated by reference, but they should be attached to the rules so that they're readily available to everyone for quick reference. And I provided some others as well. I provided them to you all. Thank you very much for your consideration, and again, please put this on discussion so that appropriate changes can be made.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? See someone moving up, so I'll wait.
Oh, no. Dallas Platt, I live in the sixth ward, and I just wanted to follow up with one of Judith's comments having to do with public unable to come and listen to comments. We've got an awful lot of disabled people restricted to a wheelchair, and there's others with walkers, and they can't come. They would if our public buses, if we had public transit that ran to 8:00 or 8:30. But it's almost 7:00 now, and you can't get to one of these meetings and get back out before... And catch a bus. So, under those circumstances, I think you've got a lot of cover to provide full televised coverage of your meetings for everyone in the community, whether they're disabled or not. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll ask people from council, but real quick, I will be asking council to minimize this discussion, but if not, maybe even to table it because I do think there's lots of changes and just being cognizant that a week is really not enough time with everything that we have going on right now to allow Corporate Huff to go through that. I did get a chance to finally look at them, as I mentioned, at the meeting last week. I didn't think I'd be able to do so before Monday, given that it was a holiday weekend and that I would be traveling. But I did go through them last night, and I too have lots of different questions or places where I found things that maybe could be amended. I mean, first and foremost, thank you to the committee members. I know how much work goes into this. Having worked with the code of conduct, it takes hours and hours and hours, so I'm fully thankful for that. And it's always easier for someone that hasn't been staring at the same document to maybe see something than if it's a document that you drafted yourself. But some of those questions, just for the committee members and my colleagues to think about, like the rule number one, the way it's written that except for holidays, that the meetings would be rescheduled to a previous business day. Well, what we're doing with January 1 meeting in itself contradicts this because we're scheduling it for the next week. The day before would automatically be the 31st. Rule number two, I see that committee chair was removed from the previous rules. I'm not necessarily against it. I just would want an explanation, like kind of what was the thought process there? And then the 24 hours notice, I mean, Chapter 21 of the Iowa Code is very clear. We have to provide the agenda to the public within the 24 hours. So, from my perspective, it would not be fair to our clerk to show up at, you know, with 23 hours and so many minutes to say, hey, I need this on the agenda. So, perhaps as a council, to avoid any situation like that, we should change that to like 48 hours. And so, that would go with Rule Two and Rule Four as well. For rule number three, I don't see anything about changes to the agenda in terms of only those items being considered. And obviously, there could be a motion to suspend rules to add that. So, I mean, that's something that I think should probably also be considered there. I think that in all of these, we need to make sure that it's all the different meetings, not just committee of the whole and council. I mean, if there's a special meeting, if there's management update, I mean, the same goes for like number five. We have that, you know, our chief of police or their designated will be here. They're actually here at all the meetings, management update, you know, special meetings. But the way we have the rule written makes it seem like they're only need to be here at the committee of the whole or the council meetings. I'm just hitting some of the main important points. One thing that I thought about that's come up often is that during public comment, people will come up, sometimes they ask questions, or they're like, well, what about this? And we don't dialogue with them, which I understand why. It's not an open floor for debate, but we really don't have the opportunity after that either to say... To comment or to, you know, respond to some of the constituents' concerns. And I've heard from constituents that say they feel like they just show up and, you know, nobody ever gets back to them. I don't know if perhaps we want to consider adding something at the end after public with business that allows like final comments from council. It's my understanding that reports of city official... City officials is actually like directors, not us as council. So, I would... I mean, I think I want my colleagues to consider that, that'd be something that I'd bring up. Other than that, there's several places where it says without debate, without debate, which isn't necessarily consistent with Robert's rules. And I think that having debate, or better yet, discussion is important. So, for example, if there's a point of order, it would be helpful to my colleagues for if I'm going to call point of order, to give the grounds, the basis, like what rule is being breached? If I'm not able to do so and my colleagues are forced to just take it to a vote, I don't think that that's helpful. So, in a lot of places here where, you know, where it says without debate, I think we should probably reconsider, especially when Robert's rules do allow for discussion. Looking at Rule 12, when it comes to the duties of the mayor, I know that it says that part of his duties are to enforce the rules of decorum, but to my knowledge, we don't have any rules of decorum on the books, at least right now. So, probably we should have rules of decorum, which is... Because from my knowledge, that's different than a code of elected officials, code of conduct. We were provided a sample rules of decorum, February, January, sometime this year, as maybe something for us to consider, but to my knowledge, it was never adopted. So, perhaps we should be looking at adopting those as well. 13, this is one that also is important to me. So, it indicates that you cannot speak unless you have the floor, which makes sense. But I do think that we need to outline an exception for a situation where someone believes the rules are being broken. And if that's the exception, is simply the point of order, then so be it. But we've seen that in this, just earlier this year, where that became necessary. And obviously, if we want to stop a violation of like open meetings laws, we want to make sure that the council has a way by which bringing that forth, even if the person doesn't have the floor at that given time. I certainly agree with the constituents in regards to ensuring, you know, Rule 28, we should obviously ensure that we're providing full attention. Obviously, I would include not excessively on cell phones on there where it says that we're not to do discussion or create a disturbance. I would include and/or distraction. And by definition, disturbance can be something big, but if I'm over here on my phone, that could be distracting to the person sitting next to me. And then there's several parts of the rules that say will, and I would say shall would make more sense, to change those to shall to make it clear how it should, you know, how it should be going. And similarly, with the use of words. I know that in council, we've used like, I'm going to do a motion to table. In reality, it would be a motion to postpone because a motion to table would just be for that meeting. So, perhaps we should ensure that the rules are more coincide with Robert's rules to avoid any confusion and ensure that we're using the same language throughout. Like, for example, Rule 24, we call it ad hoc committees, but then it goes on to say the mayor can appoint special committees. So, using the same language to make sure that it's clear to everyone would probably be helpful. And clarifying some places where it says like unanimous consent, it's not clear if it's of the entire council or of just those members present that day. A couple other things that I would want us to consider would be, should we outline how we take forth point of orders? I mean, I know in practice, we hear it, but there's never like an actual vote taken or a procedure for that. I did have, actually have a question about meetings being recorded that I asked our administrator yesterday after the management updated... Update. I would want to know if, A, if that's in some other code, and if not, perhaps we need to include it in here, ask you what's recorded, what's posted, and so forth, so it's clear not only to us but to the public. And maybe we should consider the voting by phone as well. I know in previous times, before my time, there was concern that some member or members would show under the influence. So, perhaps it would be hard to see if a member of the body is showing up under the influence of any substance if they're on the phone. So, perhaps that's something that we should maybe reconsider, whether or not they can vote by phone. Seeing, that's just a few of my comments. I will be emailing them out. I don't know if... Do you prefer that I just email them to you, Corporate Counsel Huff?
That would be fine.
Perfect. And yes, and like I said, I would request that we either put on discussion or maybe table it. I know I agree to get it done as soon as possible, but at the same point in time, I want to make sure that what we put forth fully, you know, is the best thing we can do. So, Alderman Jobin.
Thank you, Chair. I will be making a motion to postpone unless... And I will wait for some of my other council members if they have comments. Looks like I drew the short straw from the committee people. I would definitely say that I would have lost a significant wager going into this thinking because I thought, man, there's only going to be a couple items, but man, you talk about getting in the weeds on things, and it's definitely necessary work. And yeah, there's some tweaks to do it. So, yeah, we need a little bit more time. Yeah, it'd be nice to have things. I think Elderwoman Burkholder will definitely make sure the rules of decorum are in there. Been working on it pretty diligently, so those types of things. So, I'll just wait to see if maybe there's comment. Do we want to make that motion to postpone tonight? Do we want it on discussion for next week to allow people to chat a little bit more and then make it then? So, I'm ambivalent to either. So, I'll just wait.
I see Corporate Counsel Huff.
So, if council's thinking about not voting on this next week, the probably best motion to make would be for someone to make a motion to send the item back to committee for consideration of the comments provided. And that's kind of just the most proper thing to do. When a committee gives you an output, if you want it to do more work, you send it back to the committee, and therefore, the committee stays in place. So, that's probably the best... And then, once the committee's done with it, then they can bring it back. That way, we don't have to worry about, well, we only postponed it two cycles, but we're not done yet. So, might just be the best way to phrase it.
Thank you, Corporate Counsel. Elderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Elderwoman Newton, and thank you for your comments. It was... It has... It was a long haul, but I think that it is... This is important work, and certainly, I was going to ask if the process might be to go back to committee. Now, you had asked last week for comments. I don't know how many you've gotten, Sam, but at a certain point, will you... Are we cutting them off? Are we saying get comments back, and then the committee then can figure out when we can meet again and look at it? And I don't know if the committee here, we're all present tonight, would like to meet before the holidays or after or whatever. I know the holidays are tough because people's schedules are different, but I've got... In any case, and one point to make, yes, there are... We got through the... We got through this part, but the other part was the decorum, and we thought we're going to get to the decorum. That's a whole nother conversation, which I don't think is as long. We've had some conversation. So, that, and it may be that since we're going into next year, we want to... We had originally talked about bringing the rules and the decorum, the rules of decorum together, not necessarily to be voted together, but both things to the council. So, that's something, perhaps I'm looking at my council members, that's something we can consider. But definitely, that is looking... That is being worked on as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for that update. Yeah, I would definitely agree that they should be brought forth. I mean, even the basic procedures that are referenced in these rules, the last ones, to my knowledge, were from 2015. So, if we're doing a resolution that overturns those, since those were together, perhaps there needs to be... These need to either be attached or separate in of itself, and looking at those to ensure that they actually don't contradict the rules. Because I know if we look at those, the how to withdraw motion contradicts Rule Number 17 from the proposed new rule. So, yeah, I definitely agree with that. I do think that's... Anyone else other than going to the... For the motion? Okay, Alderman Jobin.
Thank you. Then if I heard this correctly, I will make a motion to return this resolution to the Rules of Order Committee.
Second.
You're in motion and a second. Need a rule call?
I'm so sorry. Who seconded that?
Done.
Thank you so much. Okay. Brian Arts?
Yes.
R. Dunn?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
Anne McGinnis?
Yes.
That's eight yeses.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, resolution accepting work under the Davenport Skate Park Improvements Project, combined farm ranch of Los Angeles, California, in the amount of $350,000, CIP number 64115. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this? Counsel? Seeing none, this item moves on. Item number five, resolution awarding a one-year contract with two possible one-year renewals for the purchase of specific and aggregate stop-loss insurance to Realester Life Insurance Company, Voya Financial. Company, Voya Financial, and authorizing the Humans Resource Director to sign any related documents. Anyone from the public? Counsel? Seeing none, this item moves on. Next, item number six, resolution approving the FY 2024 City Street Finance Report for the period of July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024, to be submitted to the Iowa Department of Transportation. Anyone from the public wishing to address this? Counsel? Seeing none, this item moves on. Item number seven, resolution accepting the donation of storage, office, and classroom building at the Nahet Marsh facility. Anyone from the public wishing to address this? Counsel? Seeing none, this item moves on. Item number eight, resolution approving an updated lease agreement with Nahet Marsh for the operations and maintenance of the facility and grounds. Anyone from the public? Counsel? Seeing none, this item moves on. Item number nine, a resolution approving a lease agreement between the City of Davenport and the Davenport Community School District to provide a facility for junior theater programming contingent on Davenport Community School District Board approval. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from counsel? Elderwoman McGinnis.
For the hour, I know this has gone on, but if someone could give just a very short recap of what this agreement is, since it is important, something that's been talked about, and if you could just give a brief overview of what this is.
So this is the agreement that the city and the, it says agreement, it's a lease, for the city to utilize a part of a school district building that I believe is located on Kimberly. This would provide space to conduct the junior theater programming. The terms are very generous in partnership with the community school district. You know, rent is almost non-existent, $10 for basically five years. So we have other terms in it, as you would expect, but ultimately, it's a partnership between the school and the city to allow this program to continue, which has been an asset to the community. It's a temporary home, and we'll be looking for a permanent residence, but this solves the solution in the short term.
Is there anyone else from counsel? Seeing none, this item moves on. And last but not least, item number 10, motion approving an increase to the Davenport Municipal Airport Aviation Fuel Surcharge Fees. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from counsel? Seeing none, I would ask Elderwoman Burkholder to please set the agenda.
Absolutely. I move to send Items 1, 2, and 4 through 10 to the consent agenda, and Item 3 back to the committee for a review.
Second.
All right, I see a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Back to you, Honor.
Thank you, Elderwoman Newton. Next area, any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions that are none for tonight? Is there anything else, Mr. Maxheimer?
Nothing seen.
Very good. Next, will an all of them move to go into executive session to discuss a real estate transaction pursuant to Iowa Code, Section 21.5, and to discuss strategy with council matters involving litigation pursuant to Iowa Code 21.5? Motion, second. Before I ask for roll call, just to remind everybody, we will adjourn from the executives, and we will not return here. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll, and I'll ask after that, counsel, make your way if it's so approved.
Gripp?
Yes.
T. Done?
Yes.
Ardone?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Reinard?
Yes.
Jobden?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
Anne McGinnis?
Yes.
Eight yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you. We'll go to executive session and adjourn from there.